Brother Tim from Maxwell Chapel will lead us in our, in our prayer.
Let's have a prayer. We thank you Father in heaven for the blessing of the day. You blessed many of us in many ways, so we so much we be thankful for it, Sydney. Fathers, we gather here, we are mindful of the fact that we have a great country, but it's great because of small communities like ours that make a difference. We pray that you'll be with our leadership as they make decisions for us. We care for one another, we just pray that you'll be with them as they give leadership in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Rob Melton, please.
Blessed are we to witness the light of the master states of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly Coleman has asked to approve the commission as a project on the square. He is not huge, so we would pass that as a change. Mr. Victoria, a few good please.
Randall Boswell.
Here.
Jesse Bowman.
Here.
Roger Carr.
Here.
Darlin Clark.
Here.
Nathan Dale.
Here.
Jeff Wong.
Here.
Gail McCowen.
Here.
Patrick McCurdy.
Here.
Robbie Melton.
Here.
Greg Nivens.
Here.
Cindy Robbins.
Here.
Donna Savage.
Here.
Philip Tally.
Here.
Geraldine Walker.
Here.
Shane Walker.
Here.
All present? Motion to approve the minutes from September the eighth. Mr. Robbie makes a motion.
Hold on just a minute, we've got something.
He needs to say it second, I don't know if we can, what he called after this.
Who, somebody told me it's.
I'll say it.
Jesse second?
Okay, Shane brought this to our attention, it's on number thirteen on the minutes in the last time. Everybody changed on September eighth to go to number thirteen. And he's changed that where it says county commission will not include, it says will not include comments by the general public at this point, it seems to be kind of clarified, county commission will not include comments in the minutes.
In the minutes, yeah.
Put that in there, in the minutes, this kind of board. Probably need to put on, probably suspend the rules and put number, because we've got some stuff we need to add, propose on here at the end, probably old and new business on number fourteen, and just got fourteen A, just got fourteen B on there, old business and new business.
Have you got something that we need to add to the agenda, is that what you're asking?
Where you can, you put it on old and new business either one, you can add to the agenda.
When we need to add it to the agenda, what, because we don't have old and new business on these things.
Yeah.
You making a motion to add, so we don't have a number thirteen, so we can have a motion to replace the number thirteen with what you have.
That's that one, that's that resolution.
That's number twelve.
Oh, it's already on there?
Yeah.
It just said a report.
Yeah, that, that was it.
Okay.
It needs to be revised and sit on there that it's a resolution.
Revised number twelve?
Yeah, so you do that on.
Yeah. Report and resolution.
Twelve B?
On, just twelve. It needs to have provided a report and resolution. It's where we made the changes for, start on, for make a report and resolution for the courthouse. Yeah, it's on number twelve, we're just revising what it says there. Zach's statement provided a report and resolution for the courthouse. Should be voted, yeah?
And the number thirteen he's talking about is like the old minutes, and did we?
H five.
No.
H five.
Did we actually vote on that last night?
We, it doesn't, I mean, they don't, are normally not included in the minutes at all, anywhere. They had just been putting it in the minutes, and it's hard to keep up with what everybody says. And so, we just put it on here, it just don't make it in the minutes.
It might not matter, but that meaning they know in their drawing too.
It's not on the minutes.
Probably on the minutes, right?
Or the rub out on the minutes.
Was that what was needed to be done on there, Greg, is that what you?
Yeah, we were just, you talked about the minutes?
No, we got the minutes started, but is that what you're talking about, changing the Zach's resolution?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's right.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
And then Kelly is here, so he can speak on that if I have to, because he's in on that.
Okay.
On number twelve.
So do I need to change my motion to?
To accept the minutes with, with a revise in the comment for number thirteen, will not be included in the, with the words in the minutes. So Robbie revised her approval, her motion to include on number thirteen in the minutes to be added in the comment.
I'll still say that if you need to.
Okay, so we've got a motion second.
Do we not need to approve this agenda?
We're, we're fixing to. When we move forward and approve this, it'll, it'll, I might plead opposite. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, likewise. Donna opposed, all others are opposed.
I'm just putting my.
Yeah. Okay, Donna, Shane, no?
And I will too, so am I.
Okay. So we've got, all four, or not all four, just ayes winged, just ayes handed. Alright, so the agenda is adopted, and we'll move forward into consider approval for the school budget amendments and statements approved by the education budget, this is fund one forty-one, minutes two, three, and four, and the summary of the financial statements stated June thirty is twenty twenty-five. Who was that?
Caesar.
Donna.
Donna and Sandy second. Any questions? None but he had, Mr. Victoria, we did real call, on number six.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Gail McCowen.
Yes.
Jeff Wong.
Yes.
Nathan Dale.
Yes.
Darlin Clark.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
All four on there. Number seven, consider approval for the second reading of the nonprofit resolution, twenty twenty-five, oh six, three zero, oh three. Alright, please. Nathan Dale, make some motion. Randall second, any questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
The money that we're giving the Rickman Community Center, I've been asked by some people, what, what are we doing with that? What are we doing with that community center now?
The nonprofit chair, who's the nonprofit chair?
I think that's me. I don't think nonprofits have that this year, have we?
Well, no.
So previously, what we were looking at is getting Rickman, we were trying to do a private-public partnership with Rickman Recreation Center. However, state law doesn't necessarily allow that, I've been in contact with Senator Yager to try to come up with a way to get that to happen, allow it through state law. They're wanting to put lights up with that, that money, or the five thousand that we've earmarked for them, they want to use that to put lights up to the facility, and really just kind of get it going.
It's the group that's over the Rickman, the community center, or not the community center, the recreation center down there, it's a park for the kids.
Yeah, and the recreation center's been involved for fifty years, the county doesn't have parks, apartment, it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of money that, you know, we're just trying to get them, oh, we're trying to get them started, and, or start revamp back up, there's a lot of community support out there, and it'll be a really good thing for the community.
Yeah, and they're building up the back part of, they've got baseball fields set up right now, and they're trying to get a grant for a, a rec center, like an indoor basketball court, places for the kids, because right now, none of the schools let junior pro or anything like that, and then the churches stopped letting them do it too, so we don't have a junior pro basketball league anymore for the kids to play, so they're looking at trying to, that's the reason why they just want to partner with the county to try to get in with those park and recreation grants, but they can't, as that nonprofit, but we don't own it, so we can't, so if we don't have a dealing with it, we can't go after it, either, we've been trying to come up with a way of doing a park and recreation grant for them, but.
And so the state law allows for municipalities to partnership.
To build those partnerships, but it does not offer a way for counties to build those partnerships.
I think the people asking were just, you know, a lot of areas in the county have community centers where people can go in those communities and have events and things, and Rickman, as big as it is, is one of the few communities that doesn't have anything where people can go, like a community center type of thing.
They're looking at, they're looking at tearing it down, trying to build a new one, it was covered in black mold and all that stuff, so it's something that they're doing out of their own pockets and fundraising and things like that for, and so, the way that that was set up, that was not like to be turned over to a county, it was to be turned over to the general public to, for the kids. They let the Horse Club keep their park, and they didn't take that away from them, they're doing the rest of it, on the rest of the property, even though they do own that park, they, it's not a, it was, it was donated as a nonprofit to be continued in that way for the kids in the county. Any other questions on this? Is that just going to be a one-time thing, voted on yearly, or? Yeah. It's just one time. All nonprofits are like that. I mean, there's potential for next year for us to do again, but this is just a one-time deal, it's not a commitment to next year. I'd like for the opioid group to look at, and that might be a way to keep the kids out of drugs, to have a place to go to look at, doing something like that, to involve them in like a rec center or something, but that might be something that we should look into.
In the beginning, we did look at that, and he said no.
He said no.
Trevor said no.
Anything we do to help the kids.
Yeah.
I think it's worthwhile cause, and they're a nonprofit, just like all the other nonprofits, so.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to help them, just go in it, because I think that it'll be open to being valuable, so.
Now, I've talked to the city about partnering up, because they can do that, and kind of going in together and kind of helping each other out to do something like that for the kids.
Well, when you think about it, we only have one field where kids can play football, and we've got, Outlaws have three teams, the Junior Wildcats, and the High School, and one field, that's all we have, is one field.
They have to practice on them. They can't put it.
And if you happen to have rain, the high school coaches are happy, when you played Thursday night, and he has a game on Friday night.
Alright, any other, Mr. Victoria, we'll use a real call, on number seven.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Gail McCowen.
Yes.
Jeff Wong.
Yes.
Nathan Dale.
Yes.
Darlin Clark.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
All four on there. Number eight, consider approval for the liability bonds for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And it's on number eight, they replaced number twenty-three on the bottom, but just to make the government.
Awesome, Nivens is second.
Darlin made a motion, Nivens second. Any other questions? Mr. Victoria, we'll use a real call, on number eight.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Darlin Clark.
Yes.
Nathan Dale.
Yes.
Jeff Wong.
Yes.
Gail McCowen.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
All four, motion passed. Number nine, consider approval to accept the bid from J and S Construction for the library eighty-eight doors in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars after the county attorney approves contract, that's been approved by the budget committee.
I'll have a motion.
Okay, Robbie makes a motion, and Philip second. Any questions on that? None but he had, Mr. Victoria, we did real call, on number nine.
Shane Walker.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Gail McCowen.
Yes.
Jeff Wong.
Yes.
Nathan Dale.
Yes.
Darlin Clark.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Bowman.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
All four. Number ten here, we are acknowledging, got a letter from the comptroller, Jason Lumpower, says we're pleased to present you with enclosed certificate in recognition of the hard work and commitment that the local officials include the budget finance staff to operate your government in a sound financial plan. This certificate begins, the award is based upon the following per period, the budget was adopted on and before the fiscal year end, the budget was filed with your office within fifteen days of adoption, no issues of concern was raised during our review of the budget, and your local government is not currently under the oversight of the Tennessee Board of Utility and Regulation. Thank you for your contribution, for making the government work better. We recognize the importance of managing public finances in responsible manner, and encourage local officials to keep up the good work. Feel free to reach out to your fiscal analyst or the main office, and how you presented us with a certificate to open the county on this day of October first, twenty twenty-five, in recognition of timely adoption of the balance budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. If anybody would like to see it, it'd be laying up here after. Be welcome to look at it. Just wanted to recognize and thank you guys for all your hard work for adopting and being recognized by the state. Number eleven, consider approval for notaries at large Emma Cannon renewal, Melinda Pennington renewal, Rachel Helbig, Lynn. Just need a motion second. Okay, I sent Donna and Greg first, because I was looking that way, Donna made a motion, Greg said, end of discussion. All four say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Ayes have it. Number twelve, we had made the changes adopted that Zach, which is unable to be here today, Mr. Kelly Coleman will be speaking here in just a second, provided a report and a resolution for the courthouse to be voted on. This is for the courthouse upon the square. Mr. Kelly, if you'd like to come up and address.
Sure, well, I actually didn't know I was here to present his report, but I'm happy to answer any questions about. First of all, I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here before you've done. I spoke to Mr. Barlow, six weeks ago, and asked him if he could meet with me, I swear, some of you may know, but the company I work with, Missed Construction, is fortunate enough to be doing the renovation project around the grounds of the courthouse. We're all busy, we're all, you know, going in a hundred different directions every day, and to be quite honest, I did not notice and have not noticed the decaying condition that our courthouse building is ruined. Some of you may have been aware of it, may be aware of it, may not have noticed it. I personally have never noticed the condition, particularly the windows, the entrance doors, and the soffit, the wood in the soffits, as well as significant missing mortar in, in areas of the brick. So, when we've been doing this project, I swear I've spent a lot of time up there, and I just recognize, you know, how bad the, the, the facility is in terms of the exterior. I, I personally don't know anything about the condition of the interior, HVAC, blade fraud, I don't know anything about that. I know y'all have done some preliminary assessments over the last couple of years, have had a report come in that's pointed out some things, and I think that's great. I really am here as just a concerned citizen, I'm not here as a contractor, I'm not here with any professional agenda, I just, I like to help try to make things as beautiful as possible when we can, and I've noticed the need, and I just don't like to help make y'all more aware of it, if, if you're not already aware of it, and highly encourage you to seek out the advice of a professional, such as perhaps our trusted partner that you've used over the years for countless building projects in our community up on design with our process.
It'll be here Friday.
Awesome. You know, on the national store register, I personally don't know what the requirements may or may not be as relates to any manipulations or upgrades to the facility. Maybe y'all do, I don't, and I've been doing a lot of building repair work on buildings for years, but I know that they, and if they don't, they know that would, and I believe that as much business as this county gives up on, that they would grasp, they would most definitely come and pay a visit, look at the site, give you some preliminary advice on what way, you know, which is the best way to turn. So that's really why I'm here, is to point out what I deserve, and to encourage you to, you know, if you haven't spent much time really looking at the facility, just go up there, go behind the caution tape and take a look. I've sent every one of you an email explaining basically what I'm saying here, including a number of photographs of some detail of the deterioration, and I've talked to several of you, you know, individually, at your recommendation, Mr. Barlow, I appreciate it, I came to the property meeting, I came to the budget committee meeting and spoke, and was here to answer any questions. There's been mention about reaching out to Clay County, and I paid a visit there today, I took a bunch of photographs, they've not replaced any windows or doors, they, they have repaired the lower level, some of the lower level windows, none of the upper level windows have been repaired, they have maybe half the windows that this building has. So, if you use that as comparison in terms of what, I have no idea about what they may have paid for their project, in my opinion, it's not apple, it wouldn't be apples to apples. So, again, there also has been apparently a grant that I think from Mr. Ray Evans and some other individuals have maybe the chamber aware, that, that the, that's available through the Historic Development Grant Program of the state of Tennessee, and so Marcy at UCDD in Cookeville is working with Zach to apply for a grant in the amount of fifty to five hundred thousand dollars with a five percent match. Now, apparently, to strengthen the application, the deadline is November the seventh, and it's highly recommended by the grant holder that there be some professional, maybe architect, provide, you know, just a real rough assessment of what they may see the needs are, to attach with the grant, I know they're going to be presenting photographs and, you know, written documentation, but I think to have that letter from a professional, what I'm reading and what I'm hearing is that that would be really helpful, so if you have a meeting with them on Friday?
That's perfect.
Is that an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, again, thank you for your time, if you haven't noticed, like I haven't noticed, the true condition of the facility, I encourage you just go walk around, it's really eye-opening, and, and with the money that you're spending, and the state Tennessee spending, and the city spending, to really upgrade the grounds, which, I'm not, I'm not here to be braggadocious, but it's going to be really beautiful, the grounds are, and I'm just going to be honest, it really, so the, the decay on the window seals and the windows, and the doors particularly, they just, it just stands out now more than ever, because it's the work that we're doing there. So, thank you, and I would just encourage you to take this, I think this is our crown jewel building, and my understanding is in the nineteen eighties, since any real money has been spent to do any upgrades to our facilities, so I know there's a lot of people that are, some mentioned this to me, people are mentioning it to you, and I would just encourage you to, to take some reassurance action, to develop a plan, this may take five years, it may take ten years, you have to, you know, take baby steps, but anything I can do to help, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, or if you got any questions, just let me know.
Mr. Terry, you said you were going to meet with us this Friday? Yeah. So they can get us some numbers before the deadline? Yeah. To look at? And then I talked to Zach on Friday, and he's going to check about the report that we had before, had the pictures and what was wrong with, and see if that might work as well, in case, you know, if they want like twenty-five thousand dollars to do an assessment of the property, you know, if they can use what we done before that was done for free, you know, so he checked on that as well, just, and we can attach that as what, course. He talked, he talked to Upland about doing a check. No, the grant, the grant, or it is the grant. Oh, the Marcy. Yeah, that's our grant, and Mark Dudley is with the historical society there too, and we've been working, Tommy and I have been working with Mark, trying to get a grant for over here, but they hadn't really had anything significant the last couple of years, and it's very competitive. Yeah, I was told that Clay County had replaced their windows, but they fixed their windows.
Okay. I just want to make it clear, until you have a real assessment, or a professional, a grant application is really. I just want to make it clear, until you have a real assessment by a professional, a grant application is really incomplete. There are, there's no way that any professional can give you an assessment with enough, with any rough numbers by Friday. Or by Monday.
No, we've got a month, or well, November the seventh.
I doubt that Upland's going to charge you a lot of money just to come and look at it and give you some ideas of what they would recommend as first steps.
We're just going to meet and walk through and do a rough look.
Did he tell you the story about what happened in, um, Carmel County with their courthouse? They found structural problems and had to shut it down. So, um, you know, it's serious stuff that needs to be addressed. I'm just going to mention one other thing. Uh, the report that was done two years ago.
Yeah.
I may, many of you are aware, it means I meant to, that was done by Esco Company. And if you study Esco companies, um, they're privately owned and in business for themselves. And, um, they're trying to sell you on the energy savings, and they will make a guarantee of how much savings that they can provide you, and then they will take a cut of that annual. And that report also, which I've studied, has no budget numbers. So it's not helpful in terms of coming up with any assessments for budgets, because they didn't give you any budgets. It, it states in there that their next step, if you gave them permission, would be to go out and seek subcontractors to get numbers. So, yeah, it points out what they believe some of the issues are.
Yeah.
And they're going to focus on HVAC and electric, because that's where they can save you money.
And doors and windows.
And, and insulation.
Yep.
And doors and windows. So.
It was apparent.
Keep that in mind. But, um, I had a lot of experience with this though, and I personally don't trust them. So, um, I trust Upland, and y'all trust Upland. And that's it. Any other questions?
So we've, we've got three weeks to get something for the grant. So you reckon they can have some rough numbers?
I'd say, I'd say, I'd say they could come up with something if I tell them I need some terms, terms of the grants due by the second.
I'll make that motion that that, uh, that Upland comes up with some numbers and that we approve this, uh, resolution to, uh, block grants to the courthouse and, and then also I'll add in there that we need to get some, some other grants. But it's going to be pretty costly to fix that courthouse. But, uh,
Yeah.
So my motion would be to, uh, for Upland to do the, a cost assessment and, uh, the best they can and approve this resolution and, and then bring back to the county commission what the cost is going to be, uh, so we'll know what we're looking at.
You want to start with one project at a time or a whole?
Well, we'll have to start, if we do the doors and windows and all that, that's kind of what he's talking about, so we'll start there. I mean, I know there's some brickwork things to do, and stuff like that, we should start somewhere.
I'll take it then.
Yeah, let's, let me write that down.
I'm like Kelly, that building was built originally in nineteen ninety-six, and then during the Civil War it was burned. And then they built it back, and there's been renovations over the years, but it's not been done here in the last few years. We've not done anything to it. And I hate, I'm like him, I hate to send that thing go to the waste site. That's the only piece of heritage we got left in the county town that really stands out to record.
We had set aside a hundred thousand, uh, uh, to start a capital project on that. But it, it really rotted quick this last past year. And then once you polish around, that's when it sticks out like a sore thumb, you know?
I agree.
Donna, second. Any other discussion on it?
I got an email stating that, um, last year during this grant, nine of the fifteen, um, applicants got five hundred thousand dollars for the common grant. So there's the possibility that, you know, with, with, if we get our numbers right and get the information to them, then I think it could be a substantial grant.
So at the next county court meeting, we just wouldn't have to give the house of numbers to you in the light of this.
Just, I want to interject if I may. From what I'm told by Zach and Marcy, yes, it's important to have some rough numbers. That's not the most important part of the, of the application. The most important part, according to them, is sell them on the need. They know things are expensive. And so having that hard number is, 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 is good, but don't stress it if you don't have a, you know, exact numbers, because nobody expects that right now. They really need a, a professional opinion of, of the big picture needs, right? Not, not strictly numbers, because that's the first step is having the needs. And paint that, paint that, sell them on that. That's what they're trying to do in the grant, is to sell them on the need.
That might help you next year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Toria, Lee Coroll on number twelve.
Shane Walker.
Yeah.
Joanie Walker.
Yes.
Philip Tally.
Yes.
Donna Savage.
Yes.
Cindy Robbins.
Yes.
Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Robbie Melton.
Yes.
Patrick McCurdy.
Yes.
Yell McCowen.
Yes.
Jeff Long.
Yes.
Dakton Dale.
Yes.
Carwood Far.
Yes.
Roger Carr.
Yes.
Jesse Romlin.
Yes.
And a boss.
Yes.
Uh, who's in one? Is it Dr.? Do we have any comments by the general public? According to the agenda.
Can I go first? I have a question.
You go ahead.
Just let him go.
Yeah. Go ahead. State's name and brief ground.
Scott Deathridge, Rickman. The following comments are germane to this agenda as required by Tennessee statutes. The first thing is that this agenda is lacking something and has been for quite some time. According to Robert's Rules of Order, the very first thing that comes after a roll call is to give you all as commissioners the opportunity to vote to approve that agenda or make changes to that agenda. Last meeting, someone attempted to do that, and there was not a lot of it. It needs to be fixed. Item seven, the resolution. The copy of the agenda that I was provided does not have a complete list of who all of our votes are. And also, while it does say you want the comptroller to verify the nonprofit status, it does not mention verifying that nonprofit status under US Code five oh three C six C three. It also contains several titles. One question I had in regards to the Fidel B. Bond. The Fidel Bond names the elected officials that are covered, but I know at least one instance where an unelected official was handling money, and I don't know if those votes are covered by that bond or not. Definitely something to be reviewed. Finally, there are five committee meetings included in here that occurred in October. Last fall, whenever we brought up the point that we needed agendas prior to the meeting, it was stated that only those meetings finished at the end of the month, before the month of the meeting, would be included in this meeting. This month, we've got five of them in there that came across in October. Thank you.
Why don't you come up in the dress? Say your name, before you run.
Please.
I'm Lacy Savage, Hello Period, Maricent, Good Valley area. I have a question for Mr. Nivens. Can you clarify more on what you were saying at the beginning about changing the public comments in, in the minutes?
Oh, we was just, uh, we was just going to add, I said, comment here to, uh, but, uh, we still have the public comments. It, we, it's just not adding into the minutes. It's not written down into the minutes next time we should have the recording package.
But why would you take that?
It'll still be on the, uh, recording.
Well, exactly. That's why I was wondering why, why I ignored that.
It was a confusion. Somebody thought it, somebody said that it looked like that we weren't allowing any comments. I was just trying to clarify it.
Well, that's, that still doesn't really, to me, it looks like that fixes that problem. You, you see what I'm saying?
Say that one more time.
It doesn't seem like it's really fixing that problem.
I don't see where the public comments are put in here. I don't know if it's getting, I mean, you want to make sure that they're in our agenda packets.
That's just what you said on the last one.
Can I speak on, please? Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up. We talked about it, uh, whenever we got our packets and stuff. On this, it says the county commission will not include comments by the general public from this point forward.
Is this the name of this, I don't know.
Yes. But when I read that, to me, it was saying that we wasn't going to allow the public to comment at the end of our meetings. But all it was, is they put it in there saying, as she typed up the minutes, it's not, the public comments are not going to be in the minutes. Still going to be allowed to comment, it's just not going to be in the minutes.
State law says that we have to allow public comment at the end.
When I first read it, it sounded like we wasn't going to allow public comment. But it's just saying you can still comment, it's just not going to be in the minutes.
Right, which, I get that part, and that's why I was wondering though, why would you not want to, like you said, if it's already in the recording? Isn't that like a double safety net for you in a way? You see what I'm saying? Because you have it in writing as long as the video, so I don't understand why you want to take that out of writing. Well, I mean, I just understand, I don't get, I don't understand why you want to take that out of writing.
I was just trying to clarify. We never have, I've, I've done this for twenty-eight years, we never have included those in.
So if you put it in one and then not, and then you don't want to do it again, I'm, I'm, I'm still confused on that. I'm just trying to get a better understanding.
I never have seen.
Yeah, we never have. It was just, I was just trying to clarify for Shane, put it in there.
It's brought to your attention, and it needs to be clarified. So I just said, we'll just need to insert, will not be included in the minutes.
Couple of comments to make it clearer, that's all I was trying to do.
Right, well, I'm just wanting to, to clarify on that, because I get understanding, even if it was, why you still wouldn't. Because see, like I said, it's kind of like a double safety net. If it was to be looked back on, it would be in writing along with the video. Because then if you had to look back on something, it would only be on the video, well, so and so said. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Sorry, anybody else that wishes to speak?
I do. I don't know what's on. That was from Rickman. You like coming first?
No, Miss Lowes, you stand where you're at.
I want to know why the kids can't play on that high school football field.
Oh, they do.
They do?
They do. I, oh, what I'm saying is, if it rains on, uh, Thursday night and they have a junior Wildcat game, it's a muddy field for Friday night. But they still can play. Oh, yes, they play.
Well, I didn't know if they let them use it or not, but once you said it, I was.
No, they do. I'm just saying, we just have one field in county, and all of those towns have to play on that one field.
You mean that grade school ain't got a football field no more? What, you know, I'm saying, did they do with that?
It ain't had one.
They haven't had one for years. That's crazy.
Never had one when I was in school.
Well, why can't Rickman get one now?
Well, I think in the long range plans from the Rickman Recreation Center, there is a plan.
Oh, no, it's in there.
But, of course, that's a long range plan. That's a hope that one of these days it will be.
We used to have that out there, that community scene. We would have dinners, we would have chairs, we would have everything. We voted out there, as a matter of fact. Had baseball fields, everything. That what?
Yeah, horse ring too.
No, we never did have one of them till, till, what, year? Well, it's what, a few years. Oh, we didn't know when I lived there.
I can show horses down.
I go to there and we taking my trash out. You bet for what? I mean, you know, is it going to be for them kids?
It was, um, is for the kids.
Well, and I got another thing here. I come that we're paying another attorney.
It's just on the agenda, Miss Lowes?
No, it ain't said. I got a right to do it. I read that, I can hold the Robert Trues of Order in the Tennessee State law on it. That old man Yager Robb.
That's pertaining to the agenda, Miss Lowes.
No, it don't.
It does.
He don't want to buy no shirts.
General public comments. Uh, our next commission meeting will be Monday, November the fifth at six o'clock.
Before we adjourn, I need to, uh, I've had several, several phone calls in the last little bit over the key fob system. They wanted to know why we done that, and I'm telling them we getting, and it was voted down. We voted to say on over a year ago.
Where did you find, you find that, we didn't vote that down?
Yeah, we not voted on the key fobs and, and the push buttons all at one time?
Yeah, you did.
We.
Over a year ago.
Vote that down. The offices downstairs does not have that.
Does not have what?
It does not have that. If you want to ask a question of me, you can come to my office anytime. Uh, to clarify what was said last meeting at the end, where you were pointing at me and saying, I didn't get this and I didn't get that. So, we did a test on everybody's emails. Everybody is getting their emails. Everybody's email's up and running. And the email that was sent out about the governor coming, everybody got the same email. Uh, it was delivered at the same time to every single person, and it was, had the exact date on there. Nobody got a different email with a different date. I asked you to send to me, but.
I tried, it did not.
But I've got it on my desk where it was sent to every single person and every email that was on there. And it had the correct date and the correct time that it was sent out.
I'm talking about the key fobs.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, I don't remember going with that, I'm sorry, but I don't. They wanted to know why you done that.
Ask them to come talk to me, and I can tell them exactly why.
Well, meet me after the meeting, then. I want to talk to you.
Uh, I got.
Yes.
I was going to, I got, I got this today as a certified, uh, mail. It's, it's good news. It's, uh, we, we met our, um, requirement for the solid waste reduction. We made twenty-six percent. I made a print copy of it. Well, I'd like to commend Gary and his staff there for doing such a great job. I mean, they do a good job. And if we don't, it's important that we meet that. If not, we're not eligible for a lot of these grants that we get. And they started, he, uh, that was for twenty twenty-four, and he said, we received a twenty-six percent conversion rate. And that was for the twenty twenty-four annual progress result. And they do an awesome job up there. And I'd like to just recognize Gary and his staff up there. I made a print copy of that, but I forgot it. That's all I got.
Yes. Uh, this coming Saturday, Sat- Saturday, October the twenty-fifth, from five to eight, they're having night at the museum. Uh, that is where the high school students, they pick a historic figure from, uh, our county. And they dress up as them, uh, as being them, and they tell you about the person that they are dressed up as. And it's free. Uh, Miss, Miss Robbie said if you had never been, uh, it's a very cool experience that you need to, uh, go if you can. Again, it's free. It's this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, from five to eight. At the mu- night at the museum. Stand. Yes. About the hangman? Uh, yes, yes. The thirty-first, they go to a truck to trade at the Hangman Horse Ring. It's free for the setup. They probably a hundred kids will come through, so that's a pretty good event. But the next day, November first, they're doing a toy drive coming from, uh, Ruth's motorcycle shop in Monterey. They bring the toys to the horse ring. Then in December.
Then in December, we have Santa Falls, and any kid that comes through and sees Santa Falls gets free toys, and then the school identify a family that needs help, and will take extra toys to that family, so, from the horse ring up there at Hangleam. And that was November the fifth, or, November first. They're doing the trip to treat on Halloween night, and the next morning, they're doing the toy drive.
Anyone can bring a toy.
Yeah, anybody can bring a new toy, red toy, and.
And just take it to the arena.
Yeah, just bring it to the horse ring, I think we're going to be there, I have to look, around ten o'clock is. About ten, yeah, when's the cutoff? Uh, there'll, there'll be some other twelve, one o'clock, but, if anybody wants to bring toys, they can bring them to a meeting, and I'll take them up or something, that's fine, but, there's a lot of kids will come through there on, we do the Christmas and the lamb and stuff, so. I think one year we give the sheriff a bunch for the, the toy drive, they do, some of the stuff we had leftovers and everything. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Shane made motion second.
Okay.
Uh, Rock. All four say aye.
Aye.
All four. Aye, second.